Good evening, everyone. Tonight is the Town Council Special Meeting, Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021, at 7:00 PM via GoToMeeting. The two items on our agenda tonight are to ratify adjustments to the town manager's proposed budget and recommend town and Board of Education budget for fiscal year 2021 to 2022 and send to public hearing. Before I send it over to Carl, real quickly, there were some people, a few people that had sent letters into the Town Council that were all distributed to the council members today. As this is not a public hearing, we won't be addressing any of those tonight, so everybody will have the opportunity. So if people did send the letters in, they would like them at a future point to have those read into public record, we would just allow them the opportunity in the future to request that that we do that. So tonight again, no public hearing, this will be pushed to a public hearing on April 7th. Secondly, just wanted to kind of just clarify some things and make sure everybody understands. I think we're all on the same page here. I think we got a good group of council members, you know, Board of Education, Mary Ann and her staff, and again, I think we're all after and want the same thing. We're all here looking out what's in the best interest of our town. I don't think any council members would ever be little of the fact that what the school system has gone through this past year is incredible. They've all done a great job coming through it, and I don't think that, you know, we're not here to, you know, to do things that are going to be, you know, not constructive to the future of our town. So I want to make sure everybody understands that going forward, we all have the same rocks, you know, that we're looking out for the best of the town. As council members, we are new to this as being quote-unquote "the board of finance" under the new form of government. We don't have the board of finance which dealt with the board of education in the past. So, you know, under this new form of government, the Town Council is that board of finance. So questions that we may have or we may ask aren't here to, you know, cause a rift or, you know, make it seem like somebody's not doing their job or anything of that nature. We're here to ask questions so that we understand what's going on, so that we can look at something in a light where we know that if we make these decisions, the decisions that we make are in the best interest of the town. I just wanted to make that clear because there seems to be some chatter about, you know, kind of what's happening, and it's further from the truth. So I think if we all work together, you know, we'll be able to continue on the path that we are with the development and things that are going on in our town. So I just wanted to put that out there. That being said, we'll move on to item number one, which is to ratify adjustments to the town manager's proposed budget.
Okay, so I think Mary's going to put up on the screen sort of where we are today. So budget amendments that were reviewed, at least on the town side, over the past two weeks was a reduction that can be made to the water and hydrants line under water hydrants based on new information we received from the water company. So as I noted previously, that was a reduction of $22,026. Under other general government, workers' compensation came in lower for the town and Board of Education than what we were projecting when we put the budgets together originally. So on the town side, there's a reduction of $12,987 to the workers' comp line. Employer OPEB contribution, we did talk about this. The council decided that to take that down to, line that down to 20,000, which was a cut of $58,500. I have in here, it was a necessary addition, something that we haven't talked about because we just got rate updates from MIRA, solid waste. The tip fee is increasing, it's increasing more than was baked into the budget originally. There is no tip fee for recycling, but we still have to deal with right sizing the budget to reflect an increase in refuse disposal costs. So under Public Works, the landfill cost line item needs to increase by 7,000. So the net of all four of those is a reduction to the town side of $86,513. Then as a follow-up to some conversation points, I did provide for you what describing as possible add-backs are. So there was an interest on the council side of restoring membership to cost or the council of small towns, that's $950. Park and Rec Director requested restoration of 5,000 to his repairs and maintenance line, that was a request for 5,000. Under Public Works, there were two points of conversation which started at a council meeting, which was to take and restore the Assistant Public Works Director position with salary and benefits that would require $11,524 to be added back to the budget. In lieu of an Assistant Public Works Director, the request was from Public Works Director to have a truck driver rather than an assistant. The cost for the truck driver is $90,405, which would have to be added back to the budget. And when we went over the capital plan, there was a request to put back in medium-sized plow for, a medium-sized dump with plow for Public Works. So that was a request that would require an add of $15,000 to capital. So those are, that documents the requests that were made during the budget process. It would be up to the council to decide what aspects of that menu you want to take and put back in the budget, if any. There are some additional reductions that could be made based on the council's will. First, the OPEB contribution, you really, as I noted, it's, we really only have the need to cover some of our costs associated with managing the plan, so you could take another 10,000 out of that, leaving us with 10,000. And then the WPCC taking the clerk back to its part-time position where it was previously, that I assumed would be 19 hours a week, that would result in a reduction of $10,273. On the Board of Ed side, there is a reduction that can be made to their bottom line of $260,000. Superintendent and I have had back-and-forth conversations because, again, just like the town side, workers' comp came in lower than projected, and the healthcare renewal that we have from the state partnership plan for the Board of Ed resulted in a reduction in costs to them. So between those two lines, that's a $260 reduction, $260,000 reduction that can be made to the overall bottom line. That does not impact programming, doesn't impact employees, and it's certainly not something Superintendent has been, is fine with that being reduced. On the Board of Ed capital, again, continued conversations with the superintendent, pulling out the project for equipment replacement and security communications upgrade. Those were two projects that were seen as being achievable by the end of the fiscal year and could be cut from the budget with the council providing direction that those two projects be funded out of the projected operating surplus. They, as was noted when we had the budget review with the Board of Education, projects needed to be finished by the end of the fiscal year for those dollars, the surplus dollars to be used. Those were projects that the Superintendent felt could be accomplished as long as the direction is provided from the Town Council to pay for those out of current year operating surplus. So the first page is things that are done, the second page for add-backs, and these possible reductions all require some level of council action. They're all providing you opportunities to cut based on refined assumptions going forward, so you're not impacting programs in any way, shape, or form on most of these. The add-backs require some council discussion, and if there's other questions or other areas where you want to go tonight, now would be the time to bring it up. Just so you know, we're tracking against in terms of a mill rate. With the reduction on the first page, which was the one that I just talked about already, and then under the possible cuts, the education adjustments that the Superintendent and I discussed previously, as well as increases in revenue from the state, we're currently looking at a 30.43 mill rate, which is down from the 30.84 when the process started earlier in February.
Excuse me, Carl?
Yep.
This is Tim Guerra. I have a little bit of difficulty trying to determine how to proceed this year based upon the fact that we have an increased property tax situation in front of us and obviously the mill rate being reduced. I think that there might be taxpayers in the town that would look at a mill rate decrease as meaning that their taxes are going to be decreased, which I don't believe is necessarily the case with the fact that we have property tax increases. Is there any way that you could, with the way that the current budget is standing before us tonight, give us an idea of how this compares to the budget that was passed last year?
Okay, because of revaluation, property values generally have gone up, but it went up, I guess it would be safe to say it went up inconsistently because it depends on house type, what was going on in individual neighborhoods. So certain house types increased in value over others, certain neighborhoods increased over others, so it's a little hard to sort of lay out a single consistent impact like we had last year where we were dealing with more of a uniform average. So the mill rate is down because the grand list grew. You know, what that translates into in terms of individual taxpayer situation is going to vary depending on what their house value is. It's also going to vary based on what that net tax increase is, because while their real estate property may have increased, their automobile would have remained somewhat more controlled than the value of their home. So the reduction in mill rate would provide a reduction in automobile tax payables. So that individual at the kitchen table discussion is going to vary per person. So I'm not sure how to, I can give you one concise number to say this is the individual impact, because it's always variable during a reval down to neighborhood and home property type.
I expected that to be the answer, but I just thought I would ask it anyway to see if there was any way for all of us to be able to get a better idea of what it would take to keep a zero, say, a zero tax increase.
Yes, it's going to be really hard to get to a zero tax increase because you have that variability. So if you're, I looked at just for mathematical purposes, since the grand list grew about 5%, if you had a corresponding 5% reduction in mill rate, what does that mean for reductions to be made and you're well north of $2 million in additional costs that would have to be made to make that macro adjustment? But then that still leaves individual taxpayers who may be experiencing a tax increase because the value of the home exceeded the 5% blended increase on the mill or on the grand list.
Carl, may I ask, what is the actual dollar difference between last year's budget and this proposed budget?
The only way for me to do that would be to go back to a net average based on where we were last year. So last year, we were looking at a net average that had the market value of the home at 300,000.
I meant actual dollars, Carl. I don't worry about the mill rate. What's the actual dollars budget last year? Was it 50 million?
Oh, about more a dollar, maybe?
Yes, compared to this year. How much have we increased our budget this year?
So with the adjustments, you're at 58,621,436, which would be up off of the base of 56,000, 56,279,588. So you're up 2 points, or say, just for rounding sake, $1 million. And as I noted during the budget review process and when the budget was presented, the big driver is capital. You've got debt service, even though for the purposes of budget presentation, we focus on the Board of Ed's debt and the town's debt, the blending between the two, debt service is down overall. Capital is up, and again, that's driven by certain projects. And then the town side is up after the first set of cuts, it's up about 58,000. And if you take the 260 out of the Board of Ed, they're up 710,000.
Carl, may I ask a question about the Board of Ed capital?
Okay.
You mentioned two items that could be purchased this year with the surplus. There are a few other items in your capital request for next year, such as the truck, the tow truck, could that not be purchased this year?
Since I'm not buying the truck, as an outsider, I would say sure, but I would think the Superintendent would be the better person to answer that question if they're buying off of some sort of state bid or other mechanism that delays their ability to get it done and purchased before June 30th. So I think you should direct it to the Superintendent, and I'm looking at Hollywood Square here to see if she's on. There she is.
So Mark, in response to your question, can everybody can hear me right? Sound is on. Okay. In response to your question, I mean, we can try, certainly. I think the concern is that it does need to be bid. I'm not sure 100% in this moment. We can grab it right off of a bid list from the state. So getting the bidding process, getting those in, and then moving towards a purchase and then ensuring that the truck could be delivered before June 30th is just the concern, the tightness of that timeline.
If I may, Mary Ann, the other three items on your list, security, PA system, the computer upgrades, none of those can be done in the next three months?
So the concerns on those, the computer tech upgrade is part of our laptops and Chromebook purchase, that's predominantly what it is. We just experienced a nine-month delay in a purchase from last July that just arrived last week. So our concern is that we won't, that the company won't be able to deliver those. We would love to actually purchase them now so that we have more lead time, but if they're not delivered, then we, the PA system, I think, would be very difficult. That's a bitted project, it has the process, and then the actual installation and implementation of that is probably not likely to be able to be accomplished. In my conversations with Frank Rossi, our Director of Technology, and Mike Neff, our network guy, it's, that's pretty inclusive and requires a lot of coordination of various vendors, so I don't think that one realistically can be done by the end of June. And then, what's the last one? The truck, right? Those are the three.
Well, the security upgrades.
So that one is one that Carl just mentioned that we are going to accomplish before the end of June.
Okay. The HEAC, I would give it a lot, I guess.
So the HEAC as well, we have to go out to bid and coordinate that, and that's not really a project we can do easily while we're in school, because it is on the roof and we have things going on with this building. So as we looked at that with my Director of Maintenance, it's all carry-on, we really, it would be really, really tight to try and be able to have that all accomplished by the end of June. There are a couple of other projects that Carl did pull out that we do need to take care of, the equipment replacement, there's pouring for Elliot that we need to get done by June 30th, so trying to manage all those things and make sure that they're completed and comply with that requirement, that's where we landed with Carl. You know, I don't want to propose other ways, I know the non-lapsing account can be added to, but then we would have to come back to the Town Council, so that might be a way to buy us a little more time to make sure we can complete those projects, and Carl can kind of, you know, talk about that, maybe that's not even doable on the town side. But I do think there will be funding to take care of some of those things, it's just the required timeline that's going to be difficult with capital.
Thank you.
So Dennis here, so now that I pulled up the Board of Ed side of, what were the ones that they could do, Mr. Kilduff?
So the first one was the security communications upgrades for 25,000.
Okay.
And then the second one was equipment replacements, custodial and special ed for 20.
All right.
Those were two projects that were definitely achievable by June 30th.
Okay, thank you.
So those I put up on the screen previously as potential cuts.
Okay, thank you.
This is Christine Gupiel. I just have a question in terms of process. Do we want to go establish it line or page by page, budget by budget, and go back through? Or are you looking for recommendations now? I can certainly make a motion to incorporate those two, the security communication upgrade and the equipment replacement?
At this point, I mean, that's up to everybody in the council. I mean, can we get the pages back up so we kind of know what's there again? Sorry. Okay. I mean, if we go page by page, I mean, if we can look at, obviously, these adjustments right here are pretty standard and forward. I mean, if we want to act on these right now, these are things that we've discussed in the past that Carl's put forth, I mean, so if we want to go page by page, and at least that way, if there's any other further discussion, we can do it, but we can move forward now with somebody who's comfortable making a motion to, for these adjustments set forth on page one.
I would just need, sorry, Christine Gupiel, again, I would just need the clarification when we get to the WPCC clerk. Just historically, the position was fully funded, full-time, that was Carol Walter's position. You said it's not currently filled right now, and it's currently funded as part-time. How has the task been being managed currently? And with the projects moving forward, what is the expectation of that role?
The position is budgeted as a full-time position, it's not budgeted as part-time. So the suggestion was you take it back down to part-time, which is where it was at one point in time in the past. The work has not proceeded, we have not moved to fill the position. There was an attempt to fill it when the interim Town Manager was in, that process did not go forward, and then with COVID and the rest as a way to manage cash flow, we continued not to fill the position. So the process of sending out the mailers and the cards to remind people to pump out their subject checks has not happened for the past year.
And in terms of the project management that takes place on the town side from the clerk on capital projects and some of the role or liaison between the consultant, is that sort of at a standstill at this point, or how has that been being managed? And are you anticipating that needing to ramp up in the next year?
Quite obviously, since we didn't have bondings on to do anything with sewers, there isn't any capital project moving forward, so it's been more coordination with WPCC members and the consulting engineer. We did have a back-and-forth with some DEP staff, trying to go over the process and what next steps would be, as well as any input they had for funding. The meeting to be charitable would be characterized as frustrating, but we think there was some daylight for additional work to keep going, but that's really more study work, that's not capital.
And then just one more question related to the position. We had some discussions earlier on on trying to utilize staff in the office if it was going to move to a part-time, making sure that other staff were able to cross train and also be available to other positions in the land use office. Is that a possibility at this point?
I'm not sure what the full extent of those discussions were. If you're having somebody do work on classification, obviously that requires some back-and-forth with the union. If the position is functioning as a greeter, for lack of a better word, to help guide people coming to the counter to the different departments, that's sort of a no-brainer add-on to the job when they're idle up doing WPCC-type work.
Thank you.
So getting back to my last comments, are we good to make a move on the page one adjustments?
Yeah. This is Dennis. We have three things there on the screen, the 522, the 512, and I think it's 558. Are we also going to add those two 10s that Mr. Kilduff talked about?
We're on page one. With the water and hydrants for 22026, workman's comp for 12987, the employer OPEB for 58.5, and then the add-back for landfill costs at 7,000.
Chris, one more. Second.
Further discussions? Here and not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, thank you. Can we, and then we move on to, can we go to the next page? So we see what's there again. Move on here to the possible add-backs, all listed here.
So this is a matter of what's your, what's your pleasure? Obviously, the smallest one of cost dues is not hugely significant in the grand scheme of things. The others, one of the others are a little weightier.
I have a question. This is Tim. Still a little confused, I see truck driver for 90,405, and what is that Assistant PW Director? Is that?
So this goes back to the conversation after the budget was presented. Way I gave you the budget was eliminating the Assistant Public Works Director, which was reducing headcount. The Public Works Commission, as I understand it, would prefer to have the Assistant Public Works Director put back in, and I believe that was raised at a Town Council meeting that, to take a look at that. Based on conversations with Todd and the way the conversation went when we were going through the public works budget the first night of the workshop, was he had more of a preference to restore a position as a truck driver rather than restore Assistant DPW Director. I've given you both flavors there to pick from. So if you want one, the other, or neither, that's really up to you guys to decide where you want to go.
The other, okay. I hear you. Thank you.
Discussion, so if anybody, again, we can move on any of them, none of them, or just say we're passing and, you know, not adding anything back in at this point. I mean, that's kind of where we I mean, that's kind of where we sit with these.
Can I ask a question about the cost membership? I do know that the the 950 does seem insignificant. But any any research I've done on this organization is that they do have a seat at the table with the governor. They do have some some pull. Granted, they're not C C M. But Carl, can you speak to a membership to cost? I know it's a small ticket item here.
It's a small ticket item. Cost is an advocacy organization, much like C C M. Their orientation from a policy standpoint is on the needs of small towns. They try to differentiate themselves from C C M on topics that are more near and dear to small towns and reflective of small town capacity in terms of staffing, resources and the like when you're responding to projects and things of that nature. Even though we weren't members this past year, I wasn't asked to participate in their legislative building process. Their agenda and broad theme is similar to C C M's but with a finer point went on it for the unique issues that small towns have to respond to. You're talking about development issues. Small towns are usually suffering from infrastructure issues as it relates to wastewater and drinking water, which you don't necessarily have in big cities. There's not so much of an active research arm like you have at C C M. So it's really more of a member to member working type type event. They have one lobbyist who's working, working the capital as opposed to a staff of them at C C M. So it's just a matter of having a voice that's slightly different than C C M's. But it's really what's what's the pleasure of the council and.
Okay, I'd like to include. I'd like to include that if we could and then move on to the next, some of the next items.
You want to make a motion?
I would agree.
Okay. So I guess there's a motion in a second. Any other to include the cost membership fee of $950? Any further discussion?
Doesn't the motion have to be amended to include that?
Include what?
To include the cost item of 950. The motion didn't have that in it.
Okay. Eric?
Uh, yes, and please include the cost member show. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second it.
Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, that passes. I mean, as far as the other ones goes, you know, in light of what we're still facing here in town with the revol, yes, we might see a little bit of a mill rate, you know, decrease. But given the fact that obviously revolts are coming forth, you know, taxpayers are still going to see an increase probably in their overhead tax bills. You know, to add things back at this point, I would personally feel uncomfortable doing that. But anybody else? We're looking to just move on then?
Christine Gupiel, I just wanted to, if the director's on the call, just want to find out a little more information on the truck driver and the assistant public works director and then also get feedback from, if anybody from the Public Works Commission is available to just explain the differences of views on those positions and also the perspective. So we have three different, I guess, sounds like perspectives. We have the town managers, we have the public works director, and then we have the Public Works Commission view on those positions. And and in order for us to, I guess, deliberate and make the best decision that is best ultimately for the department and moving forward. If we can just have some input.
I'm on line, Christine. In discussions I have with Carl, my feeling was I needed more boots on the ground at this point where we are with Public Works. In the last couple of years, the town has asked us to get into the buildings. We pretty much have dedicated two guys just to doing all the little things around the building, which has saved a lot of money to the town. But with doing that, we took a guy away from the parks and a guy off the roads, meaning I needed, that's where I need the boots on the ground. That's why we chose to go that route. Do I need help at the assistant level? At times, I'm going to have to lean back on my crew leaders a little more. It's, it's, there's no perfect storm answer. I mean, both would be great, but I totally understand the reasoning why that does not happen. So that's why I chose, if I had to pick, the truck driver would be what I'd want to serve the town better. As it is now, I'm just going to have to pull guys out of the buildings when things get busy and just shift them around a lot more. That's my take. I think Brian's on the line for the commission, he might have some input on that view.
Todd, this is Tim. I have a question for you.
Sure.
I see that the, we do have budgeted $200,000 for a heavy duty dump truck this year already included. Is there any possibility that this medium dump dump with plow at $115,000 could be passed off this year until the next budget?
Well, you passed it off last year. I mean, that's the thing. We were just kicking the can down the road. So that's why I asked for it to be restored. I still need that big, the heavy duty. And I was looking, which was asked for last year also, but we swapped things around and we understood. But I've got a 2002 Sterling that I'm not going to get a D O T inspection on next year. And I have a 1996 freight liner, which it's going to be in that same boat. That's why I asked. So that's why I asked to put the medium duty back in. We're just at that point. We've kicked these cans down the road so long. That's why I asked for it.
Hey, Carl.
I understand your answers though.
Okay, Carl, this is Tim. Is there a chance that we could take that $115,000 and put it under your town manager projects paid by cash instead of it affecting the budget directly?
At this point, the answer would be no. Cash or fund balance has been maxed at this point. So unless there's something else you want to pull out to create a slot, then that's how you would have to pay for it if that's your desire.
Can I ask a question?
Probably a bigger capital conversation that needs to be had.
I, I thought we just had a motion with amended motion and we, that was the changes that the council was agreeing to the town side of the budget. I thought that was our discussion. I mean, if we had wanted to have these individual line discussions, wouldn't that time have been the night that Carl presented the town side of the budget with his proposed line item changes? We have an amendment, we have a motion on the table with, to make those cuts from the first page with the one back add in and this cost add in. Isn't that on the table for us to vote on at this moment? Or is that, what's the status of that at this right now?
We voted on page one and then we voted on the cost of membership fee of $950. The other ones.
As part of that page one motion? So does, does voting on page one preclude voting on page two? Or is this?
All separate. Page one's done. Page one, we voted on, that's done.
Well, but we put cost into that. We put the general government administration of the cost of $950 into page one. I don't understand.
That wasn't included in page one.
It's on page. Yeah, I know, I know.
And what I told you, you could cut. So that was page one, was these are costs that you could make. But that's in line with what I discussed at the town budget reviews.
I totally understand that. Totally get that.
Jumping to page two, which is on the screen now, these are things that were suggested as add backs or requests as add backs. So it's a question of whether you want to entertain one or none of these add backs.
Carl, may I get?
Is potential reductions, which are other changes you could make to the budget downwards.
I'm sorry, could you say that again, that last part again?
The last page, page three, was potential reductions on top of what's already been discussed thus far. So I'm trying to lay out for you small individual pieces for discussion for amending the budget.
Okay.
And if there are reductions you want to make beyond these three, that's, that's up to you guys. These meetings.
My question is, page two, when you have, you said that these were suggested add backs. May I ask where these suggestions came from? Were they by the depart?
Yep, cost was something that I raised during the budget review that as an organization, had a board member come forward and ask us to consider joining that up. And it's up for council consideration. I think Eric researched a little bit more on his own.
All right, I don't, that's not a problem. Yeah.
Repairs and maintenance, that goes back to the, the last night we went over the budget. Bo requested 35,000. I funded him at, and he made comment that he would really like to get the five back.
Okay, so you just collated comments that were made the night as we went through. Is that where these recommendations or these thoughts came from?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Whatever was something substantive that I could nail down and put it back for policy direction.
Okay, thank you.
So all of these questions and all of these items as far as the truck driver, the assistant director, medium dump truck. When we did the workshops, that would have been the point at which we would have started asking these questions about why, 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 why? So tonight was supposed to be, and it's supposed to be ratified. Are we good, are we not good? And, you know, get to final number on the operational side of the town and then the Board of Education side.
Right.
So but now we're, we're here and, you know, again, you know, we're left with making motions whether or not we would want to do any of these remaining items here. Park and rec, D P W. And that's it, that's where we're at right now.
That's Christine Gupiel again. I, I apologize to bring back, go back to the D P W positions. We just didn't finish the conversation on that. Carl did have the opportunity to speak and Todd was speaking a little and we were talking about whether or not we could have somebody from Public Works Commission speak to the positions, just in terms of evaluating those specific roles and whether or not the council would be amenable to considering, looking at filling those, funding those positions, but then allowing for the time to have some analysis of whether or not we need them. What my concern would be is as to what Todd's saying is that they are needed positions. It doesn't mean the work isn't there, but if it's a funding issue, that's, that's a different conversation. Another concern I would have is that Todd's then going to have to put specific tasks onto other positions and those are union contract positions. Those, those additional work would be outside the contract. And, and whether or not that will become problematic for Todd in terms of being able to achieve what the public works needs to get done.
I mean, if, I mean, again, I mean, the questions, again, you know, these should have been done at the workshops. If you're looking to make a motion and say you would like to do something, then I guess that's where we're at right now.
Well, I'll say something that nobody else wants to. Personally, I have to agree with Chris to a certain extent that I, I currently have an issue with adding to the budget that we have. Cutting is one thing, but we're adding here almost three, over $300,000 back to the budget. And I'm not sure if I can sit here comfortably. And, and I understand that some of these were put off from last year to this year. But because of the uncertainty of the tax burden that is going to be placed upon the Clinton taxpayer, I, I also have some concern about adding all of these to the budget. Now, I, I'll make a, something to consider. I mean, regarding D P W, we're talking about a truck driver and a medium dump. I mean, the best that I could do is take one of the two. But to add 200,000 plus, and I don't think we need park and rec because Bo told us he could manage with 30. So that's what I'm bringing to the table.
Anyone else?
I would, Christine Gupiel. Tim, did you make a motion or not a motion?
I did not make a motion. I put it up for discussion. I think it should be discussed. I would hope others on this council would speak up about what they feel.
So Christine Gupiel, again, I would like to make a motion that we take the medium dump truck with plow and use the undesignated fund to pay for it. You know, we cannot lose another truck. And it's not a significant amount of money to reduce the undesignated fund by.
Is there a second?
I'll make a second.
Any other discussion?
I, they already are receiving $200,000 for a heavy duty dump truck in this year's budget, correct?
Yes.
So are we in the business of buying multiple six figure trucks every year? I understand the desire for these items, but we're already committing to $200,000 for their purposes. Honestly, I think another 115 is more than I would want to. No offense, Public Works, you guys do a phenomenal job and, and utilizing what you have is extraordinary and you, you just do a phenomenal job. But personally, in the economic climate we're in, I cannot in good conscience commit to spending $315,000 towards vehicles this year. I'm sorry. I would, so.
Any other comments? No. All in favor of purchasing the medium dump with plow for 115,000 out of, what did you say, contingency? Was that your motion?
It would be out of fund balance.
For fund balance? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
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 I'm sorry, guys.
Any other discussions?
Pretending to what, Mr. Chairman?
The other items that are open here. Park and rec, anybody else want to make a move? Any of these other ones?
All right.
Again, anyone looking to make a motion or move on any other ones? Bring that, we'll move on to the next page. Again, these are all possible reductions, funding more of the O P A B contribution of 10,000. And then the W P C C salaries clerk from the full, from part time, clerk to part time from full time. Savings of 10 to 73. Savings of 10,273. Any motions on these?
I make a motion that we reduce both of those budget items by the amounts indicated from the town manager.
Okay. And then your, in your motion, obviously, we would include 10,000 for the OPEB. And then we do reduction to 10,273 for the WPCC clerk.
Yeah, I put them both in one motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any other further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, what type of hours, how would that play out in the land use office? What was the full-time position hours versus now with the part-time?
Full-time position hours was budgeted at 30 hours a week. So reducing it to part-time is 19 hours a week.
And that's as high as we can go with those part-time hours is 19?
It gets to a point of diminishing returns at that point.
It's also, just Christine Goopil, anything above the 19 hours triggers it becoming a position, a union contract position, and then benefits are allowed to it? Just for clarification, the clerk from full-time to part-time, is that just the salary? Or is that also incorporate the benefits? My assumption, because of dollar amount is very low, it does not incorporate the benefits included in it as well?
That is just cutting wages. The FICA expense is $765. There is no benefits reduction as benefits were not baked into the budget on the front end.
Any other further discussion?
Christine Goopil, again, you know, I'm certainly in favor of the OPEB contribution reduction if that is ultimately what we're being advised upon. I'm just uncomfortable with the clerk position moving and not understanding fully whether or not the department is going to be able to cover the need structurally. The need was there before. Just, you know, in terms of clarification, again, we have the opportunity where we could fund the position and look at structurally how the department is organized later. But still have the availability of that fund if we need to fund it.
Anyone else? All in favor of the motion on the table? Opposed?
Aye.
I oppose.
Opposed.
Upstaying? That moves forward. Next item we have on is education, which obviously, this has already been discussed. There was the adjustment to their increase of $260,000 to over the actual healthcare cost and workman's comp renewal. So at this point, is there a motion to move forward with this reduction?
Some more.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Upstaying? Okay. And then last item here we have is for the Board of Ed, again, for the security commercial upgrade, 25,000 in the equipment replacement. At this point, is there a motion for this?
Some more.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 So at this point, Carl, what do we left with?
So with those amendments and taking the Board of Ed truck out to be paid for on a current year surplus, the projected mill rate comes down to 30.47 mills. Now, I think there's still things that we need some discussion around, particularly around capital. The biggest outlier, obviously, is the radio project in at a million. So you really question there in terms of how you want to approach financing that. You could take it out of the budget as a paid expense and look to bond it and turn to the public to approve the bond issue later in the summer, once you've got the consultant's report that would give you the full cost for the project. And then it would reflect itself in the budget by way of increased debt service amounts in future years. That would pull down the budget at present. It's meant to be funded by fund balance, so you could, you really kind of need to adjust how much fund balance you're spending because that truck takes you over too high. So you'd have to skinny down some of the fund balance as a revenue also. So that's obviously the bigger, the biggest item there is the biggest driver of why capital is up as high as it is. So that's really just a question of how the council wants to proceed with financing it.
Anyone?
We're talking specifically about the, the radio system. We're not talking about, okay. My personal opinion is I would like to put, take the money today, the money, and hold it aside for the eventual purchase of the system rather than bonding in the future. Or if the money is truly available and is over and above our rainy day fund percentage, which I know it is, at least keep this aside as a quote sinking fund item. And if we don't have the same luxury in the years going forward, we would at least, the bonding would be a reduced amount. So my opinion would be to use the undesignated fund to cover this right now.
I would tend to agree with Carol myself. I wouldn't really want to put it to bond. If we have the cash now, let's use that to pay for it since it's something we have to, we have to do. So I think that would be the way to do it.
So could I clarify, Carol, are you suggesting we take the book, the million dollars, and put it into SPRO sinking fund, rainy day fund, whatever you want to call it?
That's what I would like to see done, yes.
That's not really how it works. So you're appropriating fund balance for a capital project. Once you create it as a capital project, it lives beyond one year. And it would come up for review every three years. It's been the town's practice. So the council would decide on carryover or not. It's not really a sinking fund or rainy day fund.
Okay, all right.
So I just want to make sure we've got the accounting terms right.
Okay, yeah.
And it's there already, right, Carl?
That's how it was structured in the proposed budget was that.
So we don't take any action because it's there already. You've already got it. As something that's to pull cash out of the undesignated for, right?
It's only an action item if you want to change the financing from fund balance to bonding.
Right. So I'm starting with Timmy Carroll, just leave the millionaire. We've already pulled it out. It'll be there from when we have to use it next year or the year after.
This is Christine Goopil. Can you please clarify the current fund balance? And then also with the reduction and where we stand with the other items in capital that would be pulled from the fund balance?
You're currently over not to be based on the funding of the Public Works truck by 115,000. So that decision in and of itself puts you under the 15% target.
Could you say that again, please?
Yeah, it doesn't make sense.
The target was 15% undesignated fund balance. So when I put together the budget, I used as much as possible to stay at that level. Taking 115 out puts you below the 15% threshold mark.
I thought that was voted against.
Right.
Yeah. Could we approve the 115?
No.
I apologize. Perhaps you didn't hear me correctly. It's Christine Goopil again. I was just asking what the current fund balance is and then just clarification with the existing sheets that we have, the pages on capital, where it leaves us with the fund balance, the percentage and dollar amount. Sorry.
So the proposed budget has $2,269,800 in appropriated fund balance for the capital plan. Based on the audit that came out and was presented to the town council, the fund balance was at $11,142,223.
I'm having a hard time hearing you.
The undesignated fund balance determined by the auditor in the presentation that was given to the council had the undesignated fund balance at $11,142,223. That was calculated to be at 19.8%.
Okay.
Right.
So then you're taking another, well, it's originally proposed, 22,600, 2.2 million out for designated projects now higher because of the truck.
No, we voted against the truck.
The truck is. You're right, it's 15.
Okay.
So so far, it's still only the $2269,800 that you originally proposed to take out of the undesignated.
Correct.
And that will leave us at 15.
Good.
And that leaves us, it should leave us more at 15.
Anyone else have any comments?
No, and this would keep us, like Carl said, this would keep us at that 15, which is the recommended threshold that we would aim to, so.
Correct.
Correct.
Not to beat a dead horse, but between 12 and 15 is the recommended.
15 is the recommended from our bond rating agency. It's not 12 to 15. 12% is going to cause you problems you already had with Moody's, so it's 15. That's based on our financial advisor's advice.
Anybody else? Any other, Carl, we should be discussing?
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Dennis.
I'd like to bring something up then. So I know I'm a little slow, but I just want to, I thought I heard him saying something about utility truck with the, with the Board of Education. That's still in their capital. Is that correct? The 40,000 for the utility box truck, 25,000 for the Elliot nurse, and 128,207 for the computer upgrades. Am I correct on that, Mr. Kilduff?
128,207 for computer upgrades is in. PA system replacement and Joel is in. Security communication upgrades is out. I'm in the direction that that be funded from current year surplus.
Right.
Equipment replacement custodial special ed, 20,000 is out with the direction that be funded from current year surplus.
Correct.
The 25,000 for HVAC replacement and Elliot is in. And then the truck, the discussion was whether that was something that was doable by 630.
Well, we have to know that. I mean, before we leave tonight, I mean, we have to make a decision. So here's what I'm, I guess my point I'm going to try to get to. They already pulled two things out of this year's present surplus, the 20,000 and the 25. The 99.8, that's going to be paid for by cash, the PA system, so that's already in the other column. I am proposing then, that I would like to suggest that we pay for the 40,000 truck because they don't know whether they can do it now or not. The 25 for the Elliot nurse and the 128,207 and take that out of that $663,000 that's sitting in there that we could use for capital that they have from last year. That fund that we created that you could either use for emergency, special ed, or a capital item. So I'm suggesting, just so we can wipe out that whole column of 338 this year out of the budget, again, to help the taxpayer, that we take that 40, that 25, and that 128. And that comes, I'm not that quick on my math, but it's probably about 180,000. And take that out of that 660, whatever, 663,000 that we have in that, that, again, not to be repetitive, that capital special ed fund that was established from the surplus from the year before. So I like to have somebody discuss that. I like to bring that on the table for, you know, the council to talk about that situation.
Dennis, you presented three numbers.
Yeah.
The truck.
That's 40,000.
40,000. You presented the computers, 128.
122.
And the nurse, 25,000.
Correct.
I'm also showing that there is a Morgan main floor resurface. Is that still on the board or has that been taken out?
That was taken out by Mr. Kilduff earlier.
Okay.
Am I correct, Mr. Kilduff?
You're correct.
Thank you. So I bring that discussion up to the council because we have money sitting there. And again, this one particular year, because it is revow, and I agree with Timmy and Chris Aniszkowicz that usually, usually now, when you have a revow year, you're able to knock down the mills a couple or so to give the taxpayers a break and make things come out even. We can't do that this year because we have other obligations. But I would try to do the best we can do to alleviate some of that tax burden on the taxpayers this year. Because we should do all we can, I think, to help them out this particular year. And wherever we can find money here, find money there to get that tax burden down for the people, I think it's worth it. And as Carol said before, next year, you know, I, you know, we have to boost things and, you know, I, I'm a funny looking guy, you know that. And, you know, we already know that next year, we already got the sale of that school in there, so that should help us next year when it comes to the end. At this time of year from now, we should be remembering that we sold the school for 2.2 million dollars, so we won't be too bad in the hole. So I think we should do everything we can, and that's just my thoughts, to help the taxpayer. to help the taxpayer this year. I could be wrong, but I bring that up to the rest of the council to use them funds that are, if not, they're just gonna sit there. And if we take out one hundred and eighty out of the six sixty-three, or whatever that exact figure is, that's still plenty in there to use for an emergency, as Mr. Kilduff brought, I think, a week ago, that if something should come up and we get hit with some type of uh, uh, special ed uh, that we weren't expecting, we'd have funds still there. So that's just my thoughts.
Dennis, it's Christine Gopiel. I apologize. I, I didn't quite understand what you're referring to with the sale of the Morgan. Are you talking about the two point two million or are you talking about the tax, the tax revenue from the land value?
The two point two that we sold it for in this year. It's not on the books yet because it's this year. So we know at the end, come this June, June thirtieth, July first, that'll be, that'll be another nest egg in our, in our, in our salts for next year's spending. That is gonna go into the undesignedated and it come July first, so um, you know. But let's not mix apples with pears. I just brought up the point about that special um, account that we made, and we could leave it there forever and never use it. And what do we gain by having it? I think this particular moment could draw up another particular hundred and eighty some odd thousand dollars to help the taxpayer. I think we should do whatever we can, not to be repetitive, to get this budget down as low as possible for the taxpayers' benefit.
Are these acceptable sources? I mean, this is fine for us to use this money, Carl? Yeah, you set it up to, to be available for uh, capital expense. I think it's just a matter of making sure you've documented the rationale. And it doesn't become something you're dipping into all the time, that you understand the rules around the money. Um, and you're also setting this up for the board to head to then turn around and ask for it, which is what the process requires. And now, if this motion were to pass, presumably when the board of head asks, the town council will say yes.
Okay.
Is there a motion on the table?
Well, first of all, I, I just wanted to hear everybody's feelings and then we can, I'll certainly make a motion if that's what you like, uh.
Well, Dennis, uh, I'll um, I'll pipe in here because I think we should. I think your motion makes sense. I, I uh, I feel that it's a one, it, this year is a unique year. We all have to realize that. The town has to realize it, the, the department, uh, the Board of Ed has to realize it. And there's still, I believe, there will be enough money left over for an emergency. But this would certainly, I think, help the taxpayer and show them that we are certainly considering their best interests and, and I would not have a problem with it.
This Christine Gopiel here. I just wanna get clarification from the superintendent um, as that structurally that makes sense and timeline wise?
All right. Um, I do think that makes sense. What it does is take the timeline away um, from the, the deadline of June thirtieth and meeting the auditor requirements for end of year funds. And um, as you know, last year, you did consider and set us, did that set aside an unlaping fund um, based on the fact that with the pandemic, we had a lot of savings. So I, I agree and I do think that, that um, I would just request that when we do come forward with these items, that we do get approval at that point with the town council so we can keep moving. But it does make sense to me. And um, you know, that money was set aside for the dual purposes and even moving these items there still leaves money in there if we were to have a surprise um, unexpected capital expense or a special ed expense that wouldn't touch the undesignedated fund for the town. So I, I agree and I think it gives us freedom on the timeline.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you, Mary Ann. But I was hoping that, you know, give you the freedom on the timeline.
Yeah, I, I think it makes sense.
So I guess now we look for the formal motion uh, to use the non-lapsing fund to cover the costs of computer upgrades for a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two oh seven. H-truck replacement Elliot nurse guidance offices, twenty-five thousand, and truck replacement maintenance department for forty thousand.
I'll second that motion.
Is there any other thing to discuss? Allen Fager?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Abstained?
One.
Okay. Oh, by the way, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
And so that you know, uh, through further discussion since the last meeting, I voted on this because I did not recuse myself. Uh, I shouldn't have recused myself in the first place, but not knowing better, I did. But I did not feel that I, as a part-time uh, substitute, that I needed to recuse myself, so that's why I voted.
No problem. Thank you, Tim.
Just to be on the record.
Yep.
And Chris, while we're down that subject, do you, do you have a, I just wanted to prepare a statement because I did get contacted by a couple of folks. Uh, just quickly, while I do not have any substantive personal financial interest in the proposed Board of Education budget, as teacher contracts are a matter of collective bargaining agreements, I do however, have a very personal and long-lasting relationship with our school system as I complete my twenty-first year as an English teacher at the Morgan School. Therefore, I cannot in good conscience participate in active deliberations specifically pertaining to the details of the education budget. I will however, vote to either support or oppose the overall budget moving forward to public hearing. I feel my decision is not in abdication of my responsibility, but a reflection of my commitment to it. By oath of office as a town council demands that I make ethical decisions on behalf of Clinton's voters, my choice to recuse myself in this matter reflects that very sentiment. So I just wanted to get that on the public record as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Thanks for that, Eric.
Anything else we need to address, Carl? Uh, so that takes you to a mill rate of thirty point three mills. And it's really a question of where do you wanna go from there? What do you wanna revisit? Um, how much more you might wanna bend the budget? What's, what's sort of the right appetite that you wanna put forward to the public hearing? That slated for April seventh.
Excuse the call one second. That was thirty point, uh, what again, sir?
Thirty point three.
Thirty point three. Thank you.
Anybody else have any discussions they'd like to bring up?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Brian.
Uh, just can I get a clarification? I know that there was a question that was kind of posed at me earlier and then uh, it kinda got sidetracked. Where did we land uh, as far as the position? Are, so we're, we're cut down one full person completely, just so I understand correctly?
On DPW?
Yes.
On DPW, correct, yes.
Okay.
There was no setbacks.
Well, Brian, may I say one thing, Brian?
Sure.
What do you mean by cutting position? We didn't cut a position, we just didn't uh, establish a new position.
Uh, that's not my understanding. That's why I was asking for the clarification.
Christine Gopiel, if you look at page eighteen DPW, there is a line item absent for the um, Assistant Director, funding the Assistant Director position currently.
Yeah, right. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, well, in other words, we're not filling the uh, the Assistant Director's position.
Correct.
Okay. I thought maybe you meant another one, Brian. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that was my question. So the position's been cut, so what you're saying is we've reduced the staff department wide by one. That was my clarification.
Uh, I'll let Mr. Kilduff answer.
Head count for Public Works is down by the Assistant Director position.
There you go.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any other discussions as it relates to our current mill was sta- sitting at thirty point three zero?
Christine Gopiel, I'd like to get some direction from the town manager on opportunities to reduce the mill. Um, the things that we're looking towards, towards the future, um, within the next fiscal year that we can um, potentially latch on to that would help us reduce the tax burden to the folks in the community. Um, you know, looking towards creativity.
Is, is that really a discussion for tonight? We're just here to ratify the proposed budgets, aren't we? Not to conceptualize about the coming year.
I think it's always an opportunity to talk about these things. We have to be able to.
Does include that discussion.
This is a budget discussion.
Correct. Correct.
You can just let Carl address if there's anything. I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, listen, that, that's, we'll have the discussion about what it is. Um, obviously, based upon the budgets that have been presented so far, they are very lean, they are very thin. There's really not much on the operational side. Carl's done what he's can, has done what he can in order to maintain, you know, that part of it. Um, you know, Board of Education, same thing. Um, but if there's things that, you know, again, future down the road items, that's really not gonna have an impact on where we sit now. Is there things that we can change or that we can adjust today, tonight, in order to lower that mill rate? I guess that's another discussion. But as far as discussing things that are, you know, down the road, um, you know, that wouldn't have an impact at a mill rate tonight. So if there's things that Carl can present to us that he may say, you know, this might help, again, with the understanding that, you know, a mill is sixteen thousand and change in order to, to move it, it, it's, you know, it, it's, there's very limited out there, but certainly Carl can speak to that. Yeah, so it, it's a matter of what fits that sixteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollar increment. Town side of the budget is incredibly thin. There's, could you make a hundred dollar cut here and a hundred dollar cut there? Yeah, I'm sure. Could you add it up to sixteen thousand? That's probably a challenge. If there's specific things that are targets the council wanted to get to, in that direction before I put together the budget would have been helpful, instead of trying to do it on the fly right now. Um, so it's, there's not huge dollar amounts that you, you're left being able to extract on the budget. Last year, I squeezed out a lot of uh, extra cost. This year was squeezing a little bit harder. Uh, and, and clearly squeezing uh, on the salary lines has been a challenge. Um, you know, as head count turns, as people turn over, are there opportunities to explore changing positions? Uh, sure. I, I don't ever know when somebody's gonna leave on and what we're gonna get when we go out higher. Right? Other, other than for, at least for the discussion for tonight, taking down contingency by another ten, we could probably live with that. Not knowing what the year is gonna bring. Right? Other things like reducing utility expenses will ultimately require capital projects because I've already bought down the price of that by uh, purchasing electricity as a commodity. Can't buy natural gas as a commodity. That would be an opportunity to pull down our costs. It's just there's no market for it in Connecticut. Um, that, that kind of doesn't work. Um, your, your other big areas are, are just things that aren't within the realm of being able to control. Yeah, police pension is big, but you gotta be unfunded liability there. Uh, so you have to pay that in, you have to make the minimum payments, you have to hope for good uh, investment returns. And you're right, you're also in the process of rightsizing what your investment assumptions are, so it's, I mean, it is what it is. I, I can't tell you there's a magic spot where you can call out a huge amount of money that isn't gonna translate into some sort of service reduction. You're looking for small dollar amounts, I can offer up small dollar amounts. I'm not sure I can get you the full sixteen thousand that you need to impact the mill rate.
Carl.
The town budget's tight. I mean, it's, that's the bottom line. And, and I think if you've been over this budget and you've dealt with it for a number of years, you know the town budget's tight. And capital is becoming tight because things have been delayed repeatedly, so the needs continue to grow and, and capital continues to get tighter and tighter at the same time.
Carl, are there any uh, line items in the budget that between now and April uh, have the potential of changing? Or do you feel that what we've created tonight is locked in stone and there, there will not be any uh, future changes based on, let's say, health insurance costs or, or whatever?
The only significant assumption that we're left waiting for is MERS, which is the pension plan for all of the other municipal employees. That's, we have an assumption that they gave us and we're waiting for them to give us a refined number. Uh, so the total dollar amount for MERS is in at six hundred and twenty-four thousand. That number could change if they give us a different indicator. We don't have one as of right now, so that theoretically could come by April, um, and, and maybe bend that number down a little bit. It depends on how quickly the state spits that number back out at us.
The talk for the best there.
I mean, that's, that's the biggest question mark right now in terms of sort of fundamental assumptions that we don't have a firm number on the insurances. We haven't, we have firm numbers on those. It's just that, and the other pension dollar amounts, we control that actuary. So for MERS, we don't control that actuary. We're relying on the state to give us the, the number on that one.
Yeah, thank you.
That's, that's the biggest item on the revenue line. Uh, for April, it's really what does the Board of Assessment Appeals do to the grand list? So what you have for the grand list that goes into the assumption making the mill rate is a discount off of the true grand list that was signed by the assessor, trying to hedge in terms of where the Board of Assessment Appeals go. So if they are, uh, depending on where they, they line up, that's, that's the only other major unknown at this point. That's, that's significant.
Okay.
I mean, that's the issue that, that obviously we, we all have to face. And I mean, to come to an agreement as a council to find out where we wanna head with these things sooner rather than later. I mean, if we're looking at a targeted mill rate before we go into a budget, like Carl said, bringing that forth at the beginning, you know, the issue becomes, you know, we're, we're talking about add-ins, you know, half an hour ago, we're talking about add-ins, now we're talking about dropping the mill rate. So we're kind of all over the board here in what we're trying to do. And, you know, with the revals, with the, the assessment appeals, with the unknowns that are out there, this isn't that we're trying to, you know, struggle hold anybody. I'm sure DPW can use somebody else. I, I fully agree with that, but unfortunately, there are some other out knowns, unknowns that are out there that, that we may be faced with coming down the road. You know, so those are the things that you, you struggle with making a decision. But as a council, we need to come to a, to a an agreement amongst ourselves and on where we're heading, because we're, we're, I mean, listening to this tonight, we're kind of all over the board. I mean, again, we're trying to put a truck back in, but now we wanna reduce the mill rate. We, we need to know where we're heading and what we're doing. We, we can't, you know, we have to understand that there are some unknowns that are out there. Um, and unfortunately, sometimes everybody pays the price and everybody has to be involved in, in some of the cuts, not cuts, but some of these adjustments that we make. I mean, at the end of the day, we're looking out for the best in the, the town as a whole. What our mill rate's gonna be, what these increases are gonna be. The values have gone up, great news. Our town's, you know, successful, you know, but unfortunately, that has a negative impact on some of the taxpayers in our town. And some too can continue to struggle. You know, going forward, we do have a lot of commercial, you know, development that's going on. We have a lot of great things that are going on in our town. We need to keep that motivation moving, um, knowing that, you know, when it comes to budget season, there's some things that we need to maybe get a little better handle on. So, um, you know, this is what we're struggling with as any small town does. That's, then that's what we're faced with right now. So um, you know, if, if there's really nothing else really that we can discuss right now, I don't know. If there's uh, anything else?
No, uh, thank you, Carl. That was helpful. Just wanted to let you know.
Anything else? Yeah, again, it's where do you wanna go? I mean, if you're looking to chisel little bits here and there to count together sixteen thousand, that's, that's about all I can tell you other than sort of the major stuff of revisiting capitals. But you've already kind of maxed out the revenue side of capital, which puts you back. already kind of maxed out the revenue side of capital, which puts you back on the, on the cutting side of capital.
For my two cents, Chairman, I think we've come about as far as we can. This is the budget that we presented to people.
Okay. So at this point, then, we can move on to item number two, and is there going to be a motion to recommend the town and Board of Education budgets, the fiscal year twenty-three, one, twenty-two, and send to public hearing on April seventh?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Chris, did you just say move the Board of Education budget forward?
Correct. That's the recommendation to move forward with the budgets as presented.
As presented. So there's no discussion of the Board of Education budget?
We reduced to two hundred and sixty thousand, and then the other items that we paid for through their nonlatching account.
And that's the end of the discussion?
If there's other things you would like to discuss?
Hmm.
That's the time.
Okay.
Chris, or Andy, Carl, may I speak?
Yes.
Yeah, the Board of Education budget, we have spoken, spoken to Mary Ann. She's done a very nice job. I just, looking back, and they're page twenty-one, looking at the past nine years, and looking at the increase from two thousand eleven and twelve to last year, we averaged about three hundred thousand dollars a year increase in the Board of Education budget. And this year, it went to nine seventy, now they've come back for about seven hundred something, Chris, is that correct, or Carl?
Seven ten, you say?
Seven ten.
Okay. Now, of that seven ten, I think it's five hundred, over five hundred thousand is in salaries.
Correct.
That was, I guess it's a negotiated salary at two point six percent, two seven, they gave to certified, non-certified? Yeah, I guess that's approximately.
Yeah, I mean, again, the superintendent's on the line, she should be able to answer that.
So, again, as I said, historically, it's been about three hundred thousand a year. This year, with salaries alone, it's five sixty?
Is Mary Ann still on?
Five twenty, maybe.
I'm here.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. I don't want to intrude in the conversation unless someone has a specific question. Sorry.
The Board of Ed budget. Mary Ann, I mentioned that historically, you look at the average over the last nine years, you went up about three hundred thousand a year. This year, it's a big jump. And I guess we're somewhat, our hands are somewhat tied in that the salary increases about five hundred and twenty thousand between certified and non-certified.
It's, what I'm seeing here is, yes, it's five hundred twenty-six, almost five twenty-seven in salaries. Correct.
Okay.
Anybody else have discussions about the Board of Ed?
So at this point, we're, so at this point, when you are making a motion for the Board of Ed budget, what is the total there that we are actually proposing to move forward? Do we have that number?
It's increasing by seven hundred thousand.
Carl, just curious, has there been any further word as to whether this will go through referendum or through a vote by the town council? Do you know, have you heard anything else?
Right now, the safe assumption is that this will go for a public referendum, and you will not have the process that you had last year. Governor's authority for executive orders is supposed to expire, at least at present, on April nineteenth. I have to imagine there's going to be some kind of extension that would take place because without any of the rules in place after April nineteenth, you go back to normal or pre-COVID, which it'd be great to believe that, but I'm not, I'm not sure that will necessarily be the case. It doesn't seem as if right now there's receptivity in his office to provide something that goes beyond April nineteenth. So that's kind of the conundrum you're in, is that you need the governor to say, this is what's going to happen for the next, the budget process. Given the fact that you were able to have a presidential election, I would assume you could pull off a municipal budget referendum.
Okay.
The only X factor is whether or not you have no excuse absentee valuing, applying to a municipal referendum and how we govern that. Because we can't use the boxes that the state provided for the presidential.
Okay. Thank you.
If you want the bottom line increase to the Board of Ed, it's thirty-three million, nine hundred eleven thousand and fifty-seven dollars. As their current base of thirty-three million, two hundred thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars, plus the increase of seven hundred, ten thousand, six hundred sixty-six.
That's a big number. That is a very big number.
Anyone else have any comments, discussions?
Mary Ann, the other night when we were talking about the budget going forward, we had, you seemed amenable, rather amenable to the responding to the desires of the town council. I mean, I believe your comment was if the town council says one percent, that's what we'll do. If the town council says two percent, that's what we'll do. I mean, it sounded like we were all, you know, fishing at the same pond, which has a finite amount of fish in it. So I, to me, a two percent increase to that budget would be approximately, I think it's, hmm, oh, boy. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but it's, is it like about six hundred thousand dollars if it was a two percent increase?
Six sixty.
Six sixty? Does anybody else have any opinions on this, or we're just gonna, just gonna roll forward here?
Open to discussion.
And no one wants any, has any other discussion?
Yeah, I'll say something. I've been involved in the school as a substitute teacher since October. I know exactly well what those teachers are up against. And I think the administration, the teachers, and the students for that matter, have done a tremendous job in dealing with the situation that has been presented to them. And I think Mary Ann has done a pretty admirable job here tonight, reducing the budget by another three hundred thousand dollars. I think you got to cut them a little slack and appreciate what they have done to protect the students, to protect the teachers, and to protect the staff. I've been there, I've seen it. I want to know if any of you have been there and seen it.
No, I have not.
Okay.
I completely understand, and I appreciate and respect the, the incredible efforts that have been put into maintaining the education system that we have. I know we are blessed with a very strong staff and administrative unit. I just, you know how I am. My first thought always goes to the, to the taxpayer, who does not have a, I mean, our average family in Clinton brings home collectively about seventy to eighty thousand dollars a year. And I'm always thinking of them and, and trying to keep the expenses of the town within the boundaries that that family can afford. The five hundred and seventy thousand dollars is strictly salary increases. I, I look at the budget book and the class sizes are decreasing by multiples. We are continuing with the same number of teachers, but the class sizes are getting smaller. The enrollment is shrinking, as it does every year. I believe I looked and we were way far under last year's projection for this year. We were like forty students under that. I just would like to realize some kind of savings in this budget. I mean, we closed a school. We didn't lose, you know, a school's worth of teachers in the process, which I understand because they just moved to cover their classes in another school. But I know the sentiment is always, it's about the kids. But what about the parents? What about the, the senior citizens that are living on social security and they're watching their taxes go up and they haven't had a child in the school system for fifty years? I, I think about those people all the time. And I just, when I see that five hundred and seventy thousand dollars is strictly for salaries and, and maintaining the workforce that exists for a rapidly declining population, you know, it's just, it's just the side I fall on. It seems like it's, it's an extraordinarily large budget for a town that has not gained anything in population in the thirty years that I've lived here. I would actually, I was talking about maybe suggesting a two percent increase overall to the education budget. And actually, I'd like to, to think about one and a half percent overall, which would cover the salary increases. That's my opinion. And if anybody else has one, I'd love to hear it. I, I'm a big believer in majority rules. If I'm not, if nobody agrees with me, that's fine. I've, I've had my say. I've, I've said everything I felt like saying. So that's how I feel.
Carol, I think we also have to take into consideration that a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars of the increase is based on the new school debt that we have.
No, it's not. That's in another line item.
It's still part of the increase.
No, no, that's a whole different budget. This is just their operating costs.
Okay.
Anyone else? If there's nothing else, then we have to move forward. Was there a motion made? I don't even remember now.
Yes, there is a motion on the floor.
Okay. Who made that motion?
Dennis and Tim seconded it.
Okay.
Can you repeat it, please?
That was the motion to, number two, recommend town and Board of Education budget for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, and send to public hearing on April seventh.
And what is the figure associated with that, Mary, please?
It wasn't in that original motion. That was a motion that was made by them.
Right. Don't we usually vote on a number?
Yes.
Give me a minute to calculate it.
Okay, thank you.
So the town, town would be proposed to be funded at sixteen million, five hundred nineteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars. Board of Education would be proposed, operating expense would be proposed to be funded at thirty-three million, nine hundred eleven thousand and fifty-seven dollars. Debt services unchanged, so town debt service would be funded at two million, twenty-five thousand, two hundred fifty-nine dollars. Education debt service would be funded at three million, one hundred thirty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Capital improvements, town capital improvements would be funded at two million, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars. Board of Education capital improvements would be funded at ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars.
So are we good to make a friendly amendment to the motion on the floor? Includes the figures.
Shouldn't we go down these separately? I mean, they, they're separate budgets that go, that are presented to the public separately, the town side and then the Board of Education side. They're not usually lumped into one motion at the end of the discussion. I don't know. I mean, it's all different now, whatever. But generally, in the past, it's been a vote for town and then a vote for Board of Ed. Right, Dennis?
Uh, yeah, I think you're right, Carol. In the past, before we became this town council type of thing, it probably was then done that way, but certainly.
It's two separate and distinct budgets.
Carl, does it really matter if we do one or two? I mean, at the end of the day, with the, I mean, we're-
It's, it's up to your pleasure for how you want to slice and dice it. The charter only calls for a separate town and Board of Education vote when it relates to the referendum question. The only motion the council is doing is ratifying your amendments and then passing that through, which is the whole work product to a public hearing that takes place April seventh at six P. M.
Okay.
So it's whatever your pleasure is.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll make a motion so we can get this moving. I'll make a motion that we accept the town budget and the Board of Education budgets as proposed and stated by Carl Kilduff, and to send that to public referendum on April seventh.
Public hearing? Public hearing.
Public hearing, sorry.
It's okay.
I'll second that motion, get it going, but we already had a motion for the two of them combined, so we got to take that one off the table, I think.
He still has them combined.
I have them combined, Dennis.
You still combined them?
Yes.
One motion.
All right. What I'm trying to say is, when I made a motion and it was- When I made a motion and it was seconded. Carol didn't like it or whatever, so we're now making a new motion, but we have to get rid of my motion, right? I mean, we got to get mine off the floor somehow.
You can make, you can make the motion. As. As we're ratifying.
I would draw my, I would draw my previous motion if that's, is that the, the way we should be doing it so that we can. Then go to Timmy's motion, so I'm just trying to make things right according to. Robert's rules, I have to take my motion off the floor then. And whoever seconded, second off the floor.
Dennis, you can accept a friendly amendment if you like.
Whatever, whatever's right, but I'm just saying, you got.
Dennis, you made the original motion, correct?
I'm, I'm taking my original motion off the floor, somebody's got to take the original second. What was that?
Me.
Okay. And that's off the floor, now we go with Timmy's motion.
A second to Tim's motion. A second to Tim's motion.
Got it.
Any other further discussion?
My discussion is I'd like to see them split into separate votes.
Last year, we did it as one as well. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carol?
Me.
Anyone abstaining? That was the most painful vote I've ever had.
Yep.
Okay.
Hey, you're new. You're still new, Chris.
It is new. Again, just want to thank everybody again, Carl, for all your hard work with all the department heads and getting to where we need to get. Mary Ann and everybody on the Board of Ed side for all of your work. Obviously, we appreciate it and understand that it is a difficult time, we're all just trying to. Do what we can to help everybody in a manner that we, that's acceptable to everybody, which unfortunately doesn't happen all the time, but. We'll do our best to get through it all, so again, thank you to everybody, the council members as well. And we move forward to public hearing on April 7. Council members, we get to see you tomorrow morning.
Yes.
There you go, 8 o'clock.
Have a good night, thank you everyone.
Night.
Goodnight, Ed. Thank you all.